Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Tonight is the first of two nights reserved to hear from the community about the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2025 capital budget and the FY 25 through 30 capital improvements program. We will hear both in person as well as video testimonies and tonight's hearing is being broadcast live on television and MCPs media. The board will hold an additional hearing on Tuesday, November 7th to hear public comments on the superintendent's CIP recommendations. We will conduct another CIP session on Friday, November 10th. If board members offer alternatives during that work session, the board will hold a hearing on Monday, November 13th and another work session on Tuesday, November 14th. The board is scheduled to take final action on these matters at its meeting on Thursday, November 16th. As always, board members are looking forward to hearing and considering your testimony. The order of speakers is listed on the agenda that is available on the board's website. Any written testimonies presented for tonight's hearing can be found on board docs. I will take a moment to have our board members introduce themselves. We have some in person and some joining virtually. Let's start with Ms. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Harris, my I U she her pronouns, at-large member of the board, and I did want to recognize we have outgoing Rockville Mayor Bridget Donald Newton with us, and I told her I would give a little PSA to remind all Rockville residents that tomorrow is election day.
And Gaithersburg, yes.
And Gaithersburg, sorry.
Good evening, Rebecca Smondrowski, District 2.
Good evening, Sammy Said, student member of the board, and this is my first Facilities and Boundaries hearing, so we're in November and still making first, so it's very exciting.
Ms. Wolf?
Good evening, Brenda Wolf, District 5. Glad to be here.
And we have Dr. McKnight joining us virtually. Dr. McKnight?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your participation this evening, and we do look forward to hearing all of our testimonies and working with you all. Thank you.
And we have, if we could continue, the administration introducing themselves. So everybody puts a name with a face.
Betty Collins, Acting Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, Brian Holt, Chief Operating Officer.
Go ahead, yep.
Adrian Karamihaas, Director of Capital Planning and Real Estate.
Seth Adams, Associate Superintendent for the Office of Facilities.
Laverne Kimball, Acting Chief for the Office of School Support and Wellbeing.
David Adams, Acting Associate Superintendent for the Office of School Support and Wellbeing.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I'm Dana Edwards, Chief of District Operations.
Good evening, Stephanie Sharon, Chief of Strategic Initiatives.
Good evening, Peggy Pugh, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Brian Stockton. Glad everyone came out for the support meeting tonight. Thank you.
And I also wanted to recognize that we also have Mayor Talisha Cersey here from the city of Tacoma Park. Thank you for joining us here today. All right, let's begin with our speakers who are here with us in person. When your name is called, please approach the podium and push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone, and please stay within your time limit. Our first speaker is Mayor Bridget Donald Newton. Please come forward.
Good evening, President Silvestri and members of the board. I'm Rockville Mayor Bridget Donald Newton, and we thank you for the opportunity to share Rockville's testimony. The mayor and council thank the Board of Education for your leadership in bringing essential capital improvement projects to schools that serve our students, including the Julius West Middle School addition, the new Bayard Ruston Elementary School, and the co-location of the Maryville Elementary School and Carl Sandberg Learning Center. We are advocating for needs in all cluster schools serving Rockville students and request that you ensure wise stewardship of CIP funding by addressing facility issues in a timely and strategic manner as the needs of aging school buildings increase in number and urgency. We are extremely thankful to Dr. McKnight for including a new major capital project for the Twinbrook Elementary School in the recommended CIP. The mayor and council and community have strongly advocated for the urgent needs of this underserved community school for 14 years, and we're elated that Twinbrook Elementary is finally being prioritized. While we support the FY 25 recommended appropriation for planning and design, the construction and completion date must not be pushed to a future CIP. We urge the board to ensure the project is completed in the FY 25 to 30 CIP. It is a matter of equity and inclusion that this school be completely rebuilt as it was constructed in 1952, five years older than I am. It's not ADA compliant, lacks decent space for specialists to provide individualized support for students, which we know is critical to closing the achievement gap. Intractable problems remain such as a lack of fire suppression sprinklers and impeded sightlines for security down the building's oddly connected four wings. The dull building entrances need updating and school messaging to bring the spaces alive and on par with other MCPs schools. These conditions send a negative message, and I implore you to complete the major capital project as soon as possible. Twinbrook students, families, teachers deserve a newly renovated facility that will enable all of us to reach their full potential. Richard Montgomery High School's overcrowding continues, and RM is projected to have a capacity deficit of 342 seats in the 2026 to 27 school year, at the same time that Gaithersburg High School will have a 145-seat deficit. Therefore, we are asking that you request Crown High School's building completion date be restored to August 2026. Given the broad impact to clusters in the mid-county region, we request that you begin the new cluster boundary study earlier in the process so that all school and community organizations understand the project and are prepared for potential changes to the surrounding high school boundaries, including adjustments in articulation for middle and elementary school students. We continue to be exceedingly concerned that the Wooten High School major capital project has a completion date of August 2029. This project must be expedited immediately. The community is dismayed that their project has been delayed by eight years while others have jumped ahead. The deteriorated state of the building places significant health and safety concerns for students, teachers, and staff who are exposed to substandard conditions, including a leaking roof and pipes, HVAC systems in disrepair, and dilapidated bathrooms. From an equity perspective, we support the school community's view that all high schools should be modernized to the same extent. Due to repeated delays, the ADA and safety issues related to unseparated drop-off and pickup areas in the front of the school building and the unsafe and crowded student parking areas still have not been addressed. We frequently hear from residents who cite pedestrian safety concerns. MCPs held just one meeting with the Wooten community in July. The next two meetings were canceled, and there have been no further communication regarding the funds appropriated to address the ADA and safety issues. We urge MCPs to quickly reschedule the community meetings and provide a timeline for how these critical building and safety issues can be addressed. The mayor and council also endorsed the prompt replacement of the main entrance glass door at Metahall Elementary School and the installation of fencing along Baltimore Road the school property adjoins to limit access to the playground during school hours, expediting the reopening of the Woodward High School to August 2026, keeping the boundary study process for the school on its current schedule, and selecting Grosvenor Elementary as the seventh cluster school, and the timely completion of a feasibility study for a major capital project at Gaithersburg Middle School. We strongly support the funding included to begin the design for the relocation of the MCPs materials management facility. The city is concerned for the safety of onsite employees due to the deteriorated state of the building, and a solution is needed for the glaring inequity of this blighted property in our historic African-American Lincoln Park community. Rockville strongly supports the potential collaboration between the Stone Street Coalition, the county, the school system, that would redevelop the site into a transit-oriented, affordable housing with community amenities. Thank you for all you do on behalf of our children. We look forward to working with you. And on a personal note, I have enjoyed the time I've spent working with you all. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Mayor Bruton, for your service. Our next speaker is Mayor Cersey. Please come forward.
All right. Well, good evening, board. My name is Talisha Cersey, and I'm the mayor of the city of Tacoma Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. The city has a growing number of young families. The current population is about 18,000, but over 26% of the city's residents are under the age of 18. Moreover, nearly 7% of the city's population was under five years of age in 2022. As a result, the strain on the city's already stretched primary and secondary schools is felt by most households in the city. Residents are served by three schools within the city's boundaries: Piney Branch Elementary School, Tacoma Park Elementary School, and Tacoma Park Middle School. Most high schoolers in Tacoma Park attend Montgomery Blair High School. However, it's important to note that because of the city's locations, families and young children also have children who attend nearby schools such as Rolling Terrace and Silver Spring International. The CIP fails to address the short-term needs of Tacoma Park's MCPs students. Piney Branch was built in 1973. To date, it has not been revitalized nor received a major capital project. Piney Branch is the smallest school site in the entire county at 1.9 acres with no room for temporary class space in its current configuration. MCPs acknowledged in previous CIPs that the school has "current" and "projected" overutilization and needs a "comprehensive" facility upgrade to increase the aging infrastructure. However, MCPs has consistently delayed action. Planning for capital improvements for Piney Branch Elementary School began in 2017, but no construction funds were included in the adopted FY 2023-2028 CIP, and the FY 25-2030 CIP recommends the project be postponed. The Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment may have implications for the long-term approach that MCPs must use to address school capacity needs associated with future development in Tacoma Park. In the public hearing draft of the plan, county planners recommended that if MCPs builds its replacement elementary school on a different site, then the current site should be repurposed for public use. However, we can't deny that space is limited down county, and identifying an alternative school site would take a long time to do. In the meantime, students must continue to attend an aging school in desperate need of repair. The MCPs Board of Education first presented the CIP for Piney Branch Elementary School to Tacoma Park City Council in 2015 with an anticipated completion of 2021. Under the newly proposed schedule, the school would not be complete until 2030. Long-term planning should not be an excuse for short-term inaction. Piney Branch Elementary School renovation has been discussed long enough. MCPs must add construction funds for this school to the FY 25-2030 CIP. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I appreciate all the work that you do to ensure that every student in Montgomery County receives a quality education. I look forward to working with you as we aim to improve the schools in Tacoma Park, namely Piney Branch Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're moving on to our student speakers. Our first speaker is Christine Chin Choi and Evan Weir. It was on. Hit it again.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Silvestri and board members. Thank you for this time to make my statement. I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Fields Road Elementary School in Gaithersburg. There have been a recent series of disruptions at the school, including police being called to the school to control a fourth grader, yelling, and use of obscene language during classes, and student conflict resulting from outdoor play. Regarding the disruptions, it is clear to me that there is not enough adequately trained support staff at the school to aid in fostering a positive and respectful learning environment for all of the children. Every week, in the past five weeks, the fourth grade parents have been receiving notifications of some kind of disruptive activity at the school. During recess, there is not enough playground equipment and not enough fenced-off large spaces for playing sports such as soccer, basketball, and four-square. There are also not enough staff available to monitor the outdoor play. Due to this limited and closed outdoor space available, class grades have to rotate access to this area. This typically results in a densely packed space where tensions easily build and results in fighting, tackling, kicking, pushing, and so on. The result of these events has been injuries to students and the periodic banning of recreational sports outside. I'm here to ask you to consider adding more funds to the budget of Fields Road Elementary so that, one, more qualified student support staff can be hired to help with addressing this disruptive environment, and, two, so that work can be done to significantly improve and expand the outdoor play space. Thank you. And this is my son.
Hi, my name is Evan. I'm a student at Fields Road. I am asking for these things at recess. Monkey balls, soccer ball, bigger rock wall, more slides, expanding the playground of more balls. I think this because me and my friends personally get really bored at recess. Thank you.
Thank you. Anya Sharma, please come forward.
You begin.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name's Anya Sharma, and I'm an eighth grader at Cabin John Middle School, and I'm here to advocate for Cold Spring Elementary. Even though it's been a few years since I graduated from Cold Spring, I vividly remember my time there as a student. It was a wonderful school with terrific teachers where I enjoy learning and making new friends. But I would be lying if I said we did not experience some serious issues with the building's structure and design that made us feel unsafe and unable to focus. First, in terms of safety, even though it's hard to talk about school shootings, it's something that happens way too often and an issue that we must respond to urgently. Unfortunately, in first grade, I experienced my first lockdown procedure at Cold Spring in response to a live shooter near our school. Like most other classrooms at Cold Spring, our main-level class had open walls without a door which shuts. We therefore had to rush into the music room down the hall, which was the only interior classroom with Florida wall ceilings and a door which closed, and the only safe place we could go to quickly. Many other student classes were cramped into the single escape room, which was full above capacity. We stayed in that cramped space for almost two hours until it was deemed safe to come out. In other instances, we would have lockdown drills where the closest safe spot was a storage closet. About 30 students had to uncomfortably squeeze into the tiny space, resulting in suffering to students with anxiety and claustrophobia. As you see, Cold Spring's outdated design only causes safety concerns for students and staff and does not provide an efficient, calm, reliable, and safe lockdown response. I also remember the severe weather, such as terrible thunderstorms we had in the area when I was in third grade. The only safe space near our classroom during such bad weather was yet another storage closet across the hall. Like the other room, this storage room was extremely tiny and could barely fit one class inside. Therefore, some had to sit and others stand for long periods in a closet which was already packed with furnishings and equipment, such as stacked chairs and shelves filled with bulky items. Thus, rather than feeling safe, we felt even more insecure covering our heads worrying about the heavy items that may fall on us on any time. Surely, there must be some more sensible ways to provide shelter during a weather emergency, which sometimes occur multiple times per week. Instead, we are faced with choosing between congested closets or a handful of closed-walls rooms in our open-walls classrooms. In addition to safety concerns, Cold Spring's open-floor plan also creates a setting where there are many loud distractions in neighboring rooms, which disrupts the teachings and learning process and makes it difficult to focus. Simply adding bookshelves or plants to divide classrooms does not work. In conclusion, it seems to us while other schools in our district have been rebuilt, remodeled, and modernized to address the same issues we suffer, Cold Spring continues to get left behind. The future is also not encouraging, as some are already dreading the terrifying conditions at Wooten High School. Thank you greatly for your time and attention to our needs.
Thank you. Yusuf Khadir, please come forward. Yusuf?
Can I start?
The mic is on.
Hello, members of the community. Today, I'm here to talk about Thomas S. Wooten High School. Imagine going to a school where there are pictures of the school older than you, and they look the exact same. Imagine for the past few years, your high school has been delayed to be renovated. Imagine people telling you that the building is old and needs to be updated. Hi, my name is Yusuf Khadir. I'm a freshman at Thomas S. Wooten High School, and today I'm going to talk about the issues of my high school. Wooten is one of the best schools in the state, and it's neglected. No significant renovations have happened since the building was made in 1970. That's older than most of the parents that have kids that go to Wooten. Throughout the school day, the temperature constantly changes because of the heating and cooling systems that do not work properly in certain rooms. In my English classroom, it was freezing and took almost two months to change the temperature. They had to contact someone outside of the school to change it. Another issue is safety. In my science classroom, my fume hood hasn't been updated or checked since 2017. Also, in the morning at drop-off time, most parents have to drop off their kids at an intersection before school because the traffic is terrible on Wooten Parkway. It makes it very complicated to drop off kids because when you turn on the road, the road is always backed up and can take almost 10 minutes to get to the drop-off location. This is due to Wooten Parkway being a main road and having a lot of bus and car traffic. We really need a new school. Our bathrooms are disgusting and old. Our lockers are old and rusty, and some of our water fountains are old and not clean. We also need more reasons for us to have a new school. It's safer for the students and has better quality equipment throughout the school. I have three younger siblings, and I may not be there for the new school, but I want my siblings to have it. Think about a brand-new high school with great technology that can help future generations with infinite possibilities. Thank you for your time, and I hope I made a change in your decision.
Thank you. Sam Ross, please come forward. Mic is on. Go ahead.
It's giving me five minutes. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. McKnight, my name is Sam Ross, and I am a junior at Montgomery Blair High School and a resident of the DCC as well as Tacoma Park. I agree with a lot of the things that Mayor Cersey said, and I'm here today to stress the importance of communication with the communities impacted by the CIP. I understand the reasoning and difficulty and empathize with the difficulty of the changes made in the CIP, particularly those with delay projects. I understand that the money is just not there when it comes to some projects. What I do not understand is how I, an active member of the MCPs community who read the entire CIP and last year's and the year before that, can be so lost in what some of these projects mean to me and those around me. I'm still confused as to how the new Woodward will alleviate the current 112% overutilization at my school, Montgomery Blair, when it's all the way in Rockville. I'm still confused as to how I'm still confused as to how after years and years of appropriations to begin a project at Piney Branch, there have been no funds. I'm confused about the timelines of the long-awaited Eastern and Silver Spring International projects. I'm confused as to if the Northwood students who enter Woodward after its first phase is completed will have access to a stadium, a gymnasium, fields, a cafeteria, or theater, or one of the many other things that I have heard but not heard from MCPS will not be at Woodward while it is used as Northwood. This is not for my lack of trying, nor for your lack of communicating. The simple truth is that the strategy right now is just not working. The baseline requirement for someone like me to understand the projects and changes in the community is to download and read multiple 300-page books, which are, for the most part, the same things over and over again, without addressing key community concerns, such as what interim strategies are being used, what impacts the construction may have on key amenities such as theaters, auditoriums, stadiums, and fields, and how there can be certain contradictions, such as recommendations to start a project but no funds. While I address this issue as a whole community, though, I do want to give special attention towards the communications for students, those who sit in the schools that exist on pages as mere words and numbers. Currently, student awareness about new projects is miniscule. If I asked middle-school students, like my brother, last year about Northwood, they'd have no idea about the project, even if they would go there for school if they went to Northwood in the future. If I asked high-school students about the projects at their school, Wooton, Damascus, McGruder, Blake, Pine Branch, and Poolsville, many would have no idea about the timelines, delays, scopes, and impacts about these projects they are about to live. I want to again make myself abundantly clear. I understand the issues that occur with funding and timelines of projects. I understand the difficult decision that comes with delaying a project, but I don't have the full picture, and most around me have no picture. So I urge you to make CIP information easier to digest and find, especially for students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Neil Rumbaugh and Kenneth McKinney.
Is this right? Oh, we're live. Good evening. To start, thank you for all you do, day in and day out, for our county's student, student staff, and families. My name is Nell Rumbaugh, and joining me tonight is Mr. Kenneth McKinney. We're meeting for the first time. Isn't that fun? We're here on behalf of the Loiderman Middle School community and the DCC. Our ask tonight is simple and straightforward. We need a designated person to oversee, manage, and care for our highly technical and complex facility at Loiderman. We need a media service technician. Our new facility at Loiderman is dynamic, it's exciting, and it's central to our community when it's working. Imagine, for example, you, as members of the Board of Education, having to set up the tech for tonight. Imagine you having to get up right now and tend to the malfunction that's happening with the stream, streaming. Imagine that this microphone malfunctioned and stopped working, or six microphones stopped working. At our middle school, this means a halt in our curriculum, a halt in the curriculum. This is not an extracurricular activity, this is our curriculum. These are the kinds of things that are happening repeatedly at Loiderman, and teachers are derailed with maintaining the space. But if you don't want to take my word for it, if I can't convince you of the need of the, of an MST, maybe an MST can convince you of the need of an MST. Here is Kenneth McKinney to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm not even going to read off. Good afternoon, Board. How you doing? This is my first time. I'm a former Montgomery County Public Schools, um, student. As my many difficult years of being an MST, this is my first time standing against the Board. Um, one thing I do ask if this Loiderman gets an MST, it makes it very difficult for me during the day. I'm over at Wooton, one of the busiest schools. They have so many difficult situations in their auditorium. I'm studying trying to deal with my auditorium and deal with theirs. Their students really need a designated MST. The reason is so they can learn. I can't teach them in one, in like hours. They really want one, and I think they should get one. Really, I know right now we having a difficulty time with our MST's. Um, that's all I have to say. I really hope that you give it to them. They really need it, and it would make it better for me because it's making it hard right now. So I really thank you and guys.
Thank you, Kenneth. Thank you very much. I hope you have a nice evening, and I hope we get the streaming up.
Our next speaker is Manal Patel. Please come forward.
Good evening, Board. My name is Manal Patel, and I'm here today as a member of the Burnsville Elementary School PTA. I'm here today to continue to urge and advocate for the critical needs at Burnsville Elementary. First, thank you for recognizing those needs last year and including the planning and design funds in, during an off-cycle CIP. We greatly appreciate your support of Burnsville Elementary. We support the recommended CIP for this year and urge the funding of construction under the CIP for completion in 2026 for Burnsville Elementary. I'm also here today to provide you with more information about the ongoing critical safety and health-related concerns at Burnsville Elementary. As a parent and PTA member, it's been a great beginning of the school year. We've had a number of wonderful back-to-school events, um, already, and the PTA recently held the annual trunk-or-treat. Uh, it, the, the event was held for staff, parents, students, and the Burnsville community. And while the event was great success due to the many parent volunteers, it really brought to the forefront the continued and ongoing issues with infrastructure at Burnsville. The school building and surrounding grounds cannot adequately support the growing elementary school population and the vibrant Burnsville community any longer. At the trunk-or-treat event, for example, the planners did an amazing job of setting out cones to designate walking areas and having parent volunteers help direct traffic and parking. And even then, due to the lack of space and the narrowness of the streets that run along the school property, there were multiple frustrated parents who couldn't find parking for the event, and many times, it was really difficult for cars to safely travel along the, um, roadways because there were pedestrians walking on those roadways. The number of attendees at each of our events continues to grow, and that's a real success for our PTA and for our community. This year, I was fortunate to meet parents of young toddlers and preschoolers who will eventually attend Burnsville Elementary. And I was really excited to see former Burnsville Elementary students, who were now in middle school. Unfortunately, the school's infrastructure is unable to accommodate these types of events that occur multiple times a year and are such a critical part of the community and a support for our students. This is not just an issue that is evident during school events. The staff and parents continue to experience the brunt of the infrastructure issues daily during school drop-off and school pickup. The school community, with assistance of dedicated parent volunteers, have tried their best to address safety concerns. The PTA organizes and recruits parent volunteers to direct traffic daily and use cones and other devices to help direct flow of traffic. But simply put, the school infrastructure is completely inadequate for the current student population. School lunch periods continue to be a problem at Burnsville Elementary, just as it has been in past years. My daughter's in third grade this year, and she isn't eating lunch until 1:30 PM. Parents are sending snacks with the students, teachers are having to plan snack breaks during instructional times to ensure students are not going long periods without food. While this may seem merely inconvenient at first blush, this is truly an impact on the learning environment of the students. There have been many studies published over the years showing the connection between nutrition and academic performance. My third grader also no longer cares to buy lunch at school, and it's because of how long it takes for her to move through the lunch lines. Due to the space issues, students queue up for lunch outside in the hallway, outside of classrooms where other students are trying to learn all day. This is, again, directly impacting the learning environment of the students. Our school is in dire need, and this need has been ignored for more than ten years. As one of the students testified today, the CIP does not make sense at times, and Burnsville has bared the brunt of that year after year when funding has been withdrawn, even if there were architectural designs that were done. For many years, this project has continued to be delayed, but we are hopeful that it is moving forward now. As a parent and on behalf of the Burnsville PTA, I urge you to prioritize the critical needs at Burnsville Elementary. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leo, and I'm currently a sophomore at Quinns Orchard, speaking on behalf of the Student Climate Action Council. I'm here tonight to urge the Board of Education to implement safer and more environmentally-friendly parking lot infrastructure. Currently, MCPS uses asphalt for its school's parking lot. Asphalt is a toxic chemical that pollutes the watershed and damages the environment. For a total of 210 watershed, for 202, for a total of 210 schools in MCPS, this is clearly a widespread issue that needs to be addressed. As I continue to see the dollop of MCPS put climate policy in the back burner, it is clear that we are not aware of the dangers that asphalt parking lots pose to our own community. Asphalt causes flooding due to its impervious nature and lack of proper drainage methods. Floods cause asphalt to crack and break. This necessitates repairs, in turn, increasing the funds spent on a system that is not only environmentally harmful, but also raises significant health concerns due to PH, PAH. This is a byproduct of gasoline. It's commonly used as a, as a tar sealant to pave and protect asphalt parking lots. They release toxic fumes that pose a huge health risk to local communities. According to the CDC, the carcinosis of certain PHS is well-established. Researchers have reported increased incidence of lung, of skin, lung, bladder, liver, and stomach cancers, as well as injection site sarcomas in animals. PHS can also affect reproductive, neurologic, and developmental changes. Furthermore, asphalt parking lots continue to contribute to the urban heat trap effect, raising surrounding temperatures significantly due to the fact that asphalt can heat up to 120, 200, 250 degrees Fahrenheit. Given our 210 schools, this impact is extraordinary. A solution to these problems is using a mix of cobblestone and gravel for parking lot infrastructure. These porous materials will allow water to drain through them after rain or a big storm, which helps to solve the issue of runoff. The impact of this can be increased by adding an open-grated aggregate and subgrade filters that the water will run through, which creates an even better filter and helps to recharge our scarce groundwater supply. This will also solve the urban heat trap effect because cobblestone and gravel do not hold the sun's energy and will not cool out during the night, and will cool out during the night. Unlike asphalt, these materials don't release toxic fumes. Going forward, a greener parking lot design is needed. We can, we can do this by implementing a capture and storage element, diverting excess water to sections of trees and native wildlife, reducing flooding and runoff containing car chemicals. I urge MCPS to explore and implement these changes moving forward to help our, to help reach our ECA sustainability policy goal and protect the health of our fellow students, community members, and environment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Stallard, and I am here on behalf of the Student Climate Action Council to firmly oppose the installation and continued use of artificial turf in MCPS. Turf raises many environmental concerns. Its impermeability prevents proper drainage, leading to accumulated stagnant water. Also, plastic fibers from turf collect and runoff. The Environmental Pollution Journal found that up to 20,000 turf fibers flow down a single river every day, directly contaminating the Chesapeake Bay. And though artificial turf can be recycled, MCPS has no nearby turf recycling facilities, so all turf used in MCPS ultimately ends up in landfills. MCPS's official website states, quote, "Artificial turf fields support the core values of MCPS athletics by providing safe competition and promoting equity and access across the interscholastic athletics program," end quote. However, in no way do artificial turf fields advance equity. Their negative health impacts far outweigh any saved costs. One study found that women with exposure to the toxic chemicals found in turf were twice as likely to have been diagnosed with cancer. Artificial turf also has a 16% higher rate of athletic injuries compared to grass due to a lack of friction and high heat. Penn State Center for Sports Surface Research found that turf can reach temperatures 70 to 70 degrees hotter than grass, leading to heat-related injuries for student athletes, such as dehydration and heat stroke. By installing turf fields mostly in schools that cannot afford to maintain grass, MCPS is directly disinvesting in the health and safety needs of low-income students, with severe environmental and safety consequences. Yet, MCPS continues to argue that artificial turfs improve equity in schools by saving money, despite its 2024 budget of $3.1 billion. As a student myself, I believe that this is a deeply flawed perspective because it prioritizes money over the health and future of the 28,000 student athletes in MCPS. If our school system truly cares about the equitable health and safety of all students and wants to reach its ECA sustainability goals, it will recognize the urgent need to remove artificial turfs from every school, or at the very least, halt the installation of additional turfs, to protect our students, our health as students now and far into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now pause for any board questions or comments. We'll start over with Mr. Said.
Yeah, uh, first, I just want to say fantastic testimony, of course, especially to our students. I really liked the testimony about communication. I thought that was fantastic. I know that that's something that, you know, before I was on the Board, I was extremely confused about, um, you know, and sometimes I still have questions about, is what projects are we doing? What's the timeline for that? What does that look like? And I know, um, that we're making strides, um, you know, I think we have that workbook around the CIP, uh, that, I know Lynn, you're big on that. That's, that really outlines a lot of those projects, so I know we're definitely making leeway there, but I think that's, that's a continued, um, thing we need to focus on. And then, you know, whenever we're talking about delaying projects, it always something that, you know, personally bothered me, especially when we look at places like Wooton, right, and consistent delays to that. I know that's something I specifically asked about, um, at the last Board Business Meeting. Um, but yeah, I, you know, I totally agree with the fact that these delays, um, that we, we need to find solutions because we cannot keep delaying these projects. Um, you know, I, I heard from, uh, a project was supposed to be completed in 2021, it got delayed to 2030. I mean, that just seems completely unreasonable. So, you know, you know, we're doing everything we can. I think we're definitely trying to streamline communication. We're trying to get through these projects. Again, we are facing, you know, constant supply chain issues. Uh, we're facing, um, you know, issues with the budget, um, and I think a lot of these things do delay our projects, but I think we are really trying to do everything we can. But, you know, I can say, um, as a Board and as a Board member, we're doing, um, all the work that we can to ensure that these things happen on time. But I appreciated all the great testimonies, um, and I look forward to hearing, uh, even more tonight. Thank you so much.
Mr. Veda Aden?
Thank you, um, for everyone who came to, um, to give testimony, especially our students. It's always wonderful to see you be so involved on a school night. Um, I, uh, just want to say that, um, I, as a, as a former parent and former student, I hear some of the concerns. I hear how, uh, from being at a school, uh, Washington Road, which was one of the oldest schools in the county, uh, Gases River Middle and Gases River High School, and what it took for us to actually get Gases River High School built. I know how, um, how important it is, but I also know how important advocacy is. Uh, so for those of you who are advocating for your schools, please keep it up. My heart goes out to the folks from Loiderman because I know I am not a high-tech person, so I can just imagine you have this wonderful, high-tech, uh, council and no way to kind of, uh, work it out. So I know this is something we heard before, and we're gonna, um, be looking at. And, uh, as far as Wooton High School, I am very, um, familiar with Wooton High School from my previous Board on the Board of Elections, and not only do you have issues with bathrooms, but you also have a lot of issues with ADA compliance. Um, and those are major issues, uh, that we know we need to, uh, to, we need to ratify. Um, and whenever we hear about issues, um, I'm sure Fields Elementary School, we're gonna be taking a look into it, is, is very disturbing to hear that the police were called on a, uh, I think it was a third or fourth grader. That is always very concerning, um, not just as a parent, but just as a community member to see what is, what is going on. Um, and we know that mental health is a hu, a huge issue, uh, ever since even with COVID that has just made, uh, things worse. So, again, thank you, uh, for coming on a, on a Monday, uh, Monday night, and, uh, we hear you and, uh, serves the turf fields. I am not a fan of turf fields. I have never been a fan of turf fields. Uh, and, uh, I know there is some, uh, some major, um, uh, concerns, uh, environmentally concerns, but also safety concerns, so thank you again to our young people for coming tonight.
Mrs. Madraski.
I'm just gonna associate myself with my colleagues, save my voice. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Uh, yes, I, um, I do also always appreciate hearing from students because you have a unique wisdom of the customers who inhabit our school buildings every day. because you have a unique wisdom of the customers who inhabit our school buildings every day. And it's very nice to see our inaugural Student Climate Action Council here making their very first organizational testimony to the, the Board of Education on the CIP. And I very much appreciate their very in-depth, thoughtful, well-researched testimony. And interesting to see the issues that as a body, there are 14 members of the Student Climate Action Council, these are the ones that have bubbled up to the surface. So very much appreciate seeing you all and hearing your very thoughtful testimony. Kind of big picture for me, I did appreciate Mayor Newton mentioning the request that as we're looking at the future projects in, in, in the Rockville area and we're looking at Crown as a high school project to help with capacity issues at RM, at Gaithersburg, that we look at doing the boundary study early. And as we, and I think this gets to Ms. Ross's testimony as well. I think so often when we are talking about projects in our high schools, we focus our engagement on that high school community when in fact it's the, it's the feeder families. It's the families in the middle and the elementary schools feeding into that school that are gonna really be impacted by those projects because the, the timelines are so long. And so we do need to be talking, first of all, saturating all of the cluster schools when we're talking about a bit of project and we want to really engage community. But the earlier the better when we're looking at, when we really are looking at capacity projects. And that does require us to look at our boundaries, reassess, and make those decisions, and earlier is better. So I really did appreciate her testimony. And I, I did too. I appreciate Ms. Rumbaugh and Mr. McKinney. We've been talking about for a while, the Loretman community's been clear in their advocacy for that media service technician. We built them a beautiful, beautiful, very, very impressive and sophisticated performing arts space. And yet they have been saying for a while now, they don't have the professional capacity to operate it safely and to maintain it in the way it needs to be maintained. And so I, you know, it's, it respects the investment that we've made in that facility to provide the personnel we need to maintain it and operate it. So I will, I have this bookmarked when we're talking about our operating budget to make sure that we look at getting that school, that, that, and that facility, the technician and this technical support it needs. And then just, just big picture, as I look at everybody's thoughtful testimony. You know, I think there are some hard decisions in front of the board coming up. I mean, projects are taking longer, projects are costing a lot more. And we have to look very thoughtfully across the system at our aging facilities and our capacity challenges. And as a system, we are not over capacity. And we look at some of our cluster schools that are dramatically under capacity. We have schools that are dramatically over capacity. And it costs money to operate a school that's over capacity. And it costs money to operate a school that's under capacity. And we need to do a better job of balancing that app so that we have more money to spend on capital projects. And a lot of times people don't really want to talk about those things because it means, it means boundary changes. It means moving students from one school to another to deal with our, you know, imbalance in capacity between, between schools. But that's, that's the kind of thing that I think we have to be talking about if we want to be the best fiscal stewards we can be for the money that we have to spend on these projects and ensure that we can put every single student and staff member in a building that they want to be in every day.
Ms. Wolf, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank our students for coming in. As usual, they were articulate, well-spoken, well-researched, and presented their arguments very well. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Newton for her partnership over the years that I have at least served on the board and I'm sure much longer. You will be missed. Thank you.
Okay. So we will continue with our clusters. Our first person coming up is Heinz Wavernick. Please come forward. Right underneath the mic. There you go.
Got it. Thank you. And good evening, my friends. It's good to see Dr. McKnight, Mr. to our last opportunity. I'm gonna be brief tonight, and I know that's gonna shock Ms. Wolf, but somebody tell her I'm all right. I've sent in my testimony in writing already. But I wanted to include something that I could not find in the budget, CIP, anywhere. Springbrook has asked to have phones installed in the classrooms. At Springbrook High School, for the rest of you. We've got a three-story building with no phones in the classrooms. We have a building with dead zones for the cell phones. And we looked at that as both a problem for the teachers because in some cases, teachers are mandated to contact the family. You know, make those phone calls, tell them about their kid and why he's got a zero. That is required. So if they don't have phones upstairs in their rooms, they have to do it at home, on their own time, on their own equipment. But the other issue is, just like a few weeks ago, we now shut down during lunchtime the upstairs hallway access in the bathrooms as a security issue. We locked one in the bathroom. He had no cellphone coverage. He spent an hour sitting in the bathroom. And from a security and safety standpoint, if something happens and people are up on the second and third floor, they have no way to contact and look for help. $45,000 to outfit those classrooms with telephones. That does not count because I couldn't get a figure on putting in adapters to increase the cell signals within the buildings. I also know that there are a number of other schools that need similar things. We have one elementary school where I went for a meeting, lost signal on the way in where I had to tell a principal of another school that he needed to get ahold of his school. And we're all walking around with bricks hanging off our belts because there was absolutely no signal. Couldn't even hit 911. So I would ask that we at least study it from a capital project standpoint. You know, if we bulk it and gather all the schools that need it, then it's a capital improvement for our safety and for the sanity of the teachers. And the rest of what I had to say, you can read for yourself. I do appreciate White Oak Middle School, or as we call it, the white elephant, being added to the study list. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Henriette St. Gerard.
How many times must one make a request before action is taken and progress is made? I'm here tonight to address several matters that require repeated attention and it's crucial that we find resolution moving forward. My name is Honoré St. Gerard, and I am Sherwood Cluster Coordinator and North, an area vice president for the Northeast Consortium. I have three children at Greenwood Elementary and Rosa Parks Middle School, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the capital budget and capital improvement program. First, I'd like to thank you for including a feasibility study for Belmont and Sherwood Elementary. Both schools are over 45 years old and in need of upgrades, particularly in meeting ADA compliance. Belmont is thankful for the recent painting of the entire school, including the gymnasium. I hope these studies can be conducted sooner rather than later to allow for proper planning to serve students and administrators. Furthermore, I would like to bring to your attention ongoing CIP needs for several schools in our cluster. Unfortunately, many of these requests were raised by me on behalf of the Sherwood Cluster last year, and I request action to address these issues, especially those with relatively straightforward solutions. Brook Grove Elementary requests new lighting for the gymnasium, essential for instruction and community events. Rosa Park Middle School urgently requires HVAC facility upgrades, a request that is made for five consecutive years, predating my role as cluster coordinator. The outdated system creates consistent air quality challenge throughout the school. Additionally, Rosa Parks, excuse me, Rosa seeks repairs and upgrades to the plumbing system. For example, the locker room bathrooms experience persistent clogging issues, requiring constant maintenance. Additionally, a consistent sewer smell permeates from the bathroom in the main office and the seventh grade hallway, while water pipes make a noticeably loud sound when hot water is turned on. Given the age of the plumbing system, which exceeds 30 years old, Rosa requests support for both immediate fixes and long-term solutions. Lastly, Rosa requests prompt installation of cameras around the building, another reoccurring ask. Sherwood High School has consistently raised concerns regarding its HVAC systems, which remains a persistent and significant issue. Despite the submission of multiple work orders, there's been little to no response. Additionally, the school faces serious plumbing issues throughout the building, particularly during the colder seasons when pipes are prone to bursting. Even in instances where pipes haven't burst, leaks and reoccurring issues are evident throughout the year. Sherwood again requests new lighting around the school, especially around the gymnasium and certain areas of the parking lot. The poor and dim lighting creates safety hazards that need to urgently be addressed. To conclude, I want to highlight a persistent problem that affects not only the Sherwood Cluster, but also every other cluster throughout the county. It is an issue that I have consistently raised as cluster coordinator for two clusters over an eight-year span. The management of HVAC repairs and replacements has been recurring challenge that has little substantial action to fully address the matter. I urge the board to prioritize finding a more effective and efficient approach to manage this crucial capital need. Whether it start with a dedicated study or committee tasked with reviewing the existing process, it is important that we properly invest in a workable solution to ensure a safe learning environment for our students. So again, how many times must one make a request before action is taken and progress is made? I thank you for providing me this platform tonight. I look forward to working with you and finding solutions to these and other issues throughout my cluster and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we will hear from Amy Ackerberg Hastings.
Good evening, President Silvestri and the Board of Education, Dr. McKnight, and MCPS staff. My name is Amy Ackerberg Hastings. I serve MCCPTA as one of this year's Richard Montgomery Cluster Coordinators, and I am the parent of a Richard Montgomery sophomore. Our cluster's fiscal year 2025 CIP testimony will include five topics. Appreciation from our cluster, coupled with some unmet needs, a request for greater precision in capacity and allocation formulas, ongoing concerns with the quality of some components of previous capital projects, a request to increase MCPS's transparency with respect to facility service requests, and other specific repairs and improvements needed in our cluster. Please see our written testimony for full details. First, thank you for delivering two portables to Bayard Ruston Elementary and for recommending planning, design, and placeholder construction funds for Twinbrook Elementary. We appreciate MCPS's recognition that intractable problems remain with that building, such as its many ADA violations. Twice already this year, the nurse has been unable to bring a wheelchair to ailing third-grade students on the building's lower level. 20 years into advocating for this revest project, we anticipate another marathon of advocacy, given the uncertainty of funding in the later years of this CIP, but our optimism is renewed. Twinbrook also sends its thanks for the desperately needed paving work completed last summer and for painting. Additionally, we are grateful for new filtered water bottle stations at Bayard Ruston and Bell Elementarys. And we remind you that Richard, Richie Park Elementary and Julius West Middle School are still awaiting additional stations. Second, it is increasingly apparent that the capacity and allocation formulas are blunt instruments trying to perform intricate tasks, forcing schools to provide 21st century services in 20th century buildings. Structures filled with one-size-fits-all classrooms do not work for what our schools are actually doing. For example, on paper, Twinbrook has as many as 11 vacant classrooms this school year. However, in reality, the rooms are assigned for other uses while its community-school status does not mesh with traditional classroom spaces. The community-school liaison works out of a closet. There is no storage space for desks and furniture when a room has to be reconfigured, and classrooms are not necessarily secure and discreet for uses such as counseling and diaper and food banks. Furthermore, our cluster illustrates problems that arise from relying solely on percentages to determine building and staffing needs. As our cluster's Title I school, as well as the building that has been waiting longest for renovation, Twinbrook tends to draw the most attention. However, thanks to its much larger enrollment, Bayard Ruston has a comparable farms population, 329 students, to Twinbrook's 334. Bayard Ruston actually has more ELD students, 218 to Twinbrook's 177. Those students need spaces for services and supports too. Thus, both percentages and raw numbers are essential when determining items such as classroom allocations. Third, the cluster continues to be plagued by multiple installations of low-quality infrastructure that constantly break down. Bayard Ruston's HVAC system is a particularly bad problem that has flooded multiple places and created air quality issues for staff and students every pre-service week for five years, the years the school's been open. Bell Elementary's elevator, which was new last year, and Richard Montgomery High School's exterior and interior elevators are also frequently out of service, and Twinbrook's electronic sign has not worked since summer 2020. Fourth, our cluster joins MCCPTA in pointing out that every year we bring requests for maintenance and repair to these hearings because we lack any direct way of working with maintenance and operations on addressing recurring issues. Thus, we ask for open data on work orders. Personally, I would like to see MCPS develop an annual schedule for advocacy and information sharing that mirrors this longstanding ineffective structure for capital planning. Fifth, in the written testimony, I list requests for repairs and improvements at individual schools. I'll especially call attention to the crosswalk by the loading dock at Richard Montgomery that lacks curb racks, curb ramps, and tactile domes for wheelchair accessibility. According to the 2021 responses to our summer cluster comments, that work was to be completed in fiscal year 2022, but it still hasn't happened. And finally, although her official retirement is still a few months off, we wanted to express thanks to Adrianne Cara Mihas for her decades of service to MCPS. Our cluster has learned a lot by listening to her pragmatism, straight talk about capital planning and processes, and wise insights. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sumit Sharma. Please come forward.
Good evening, board members. It's great to see you again. My name is Sumit Sharma. Juno Lu and I are here again to advocate for the Wooton Cluster as its coordinators. We would like to reiterate the capital improvement needs of our schools and urge the appropriation and acceleration of the Wooton Coal Spring Dufif projects and request your pledge against any further delays. We have waited patiently and respected the county's decisions in advancing other clusters' projects while delaying or cutting hours due to budget constraints. However, the time for focus on our cluster is now as we can no longer let the conditions in our schools worsen. As you will hear from others the next two nights, our cluster has several schools with antiquated and antiquated and outdated architectural designs and conditions, which have been neglected and which need to be updated to make them safe. We start with Woden High School, a 50-year-old building that has one of the oldest in the county without ever undergoing a major capital improvement. Although we appreciate the recommendation for a major renovation, we must ensure that the budgeted funds equal the size and scope of the complete rebuild the school really needs. As you know, the timeline for the school's renovation has been pushed back nearly a decade to 2029, as acknowledged tonight. Meanwhile, the conditions at Woden have continued to severely crumble. As mentioned previously, some of these issues include an outdated and poorly functioning HVAC system, unsafe air ventilation, leaking roofs and pipes, antiquated wiring, science classrooms without safety equipment, and broken bathrooms which are so disgusting that students choose not to use. Most horrific is the faulty design of our congested and narrow front driveway, which poses a severe daily safety risk. In fact, the Woden ADA assessment has revealed extensive high-priority accessibility issues which must be solved immediately. Even though the county has allocated $15 million for limited accessibility site work at Woden, our community has not yet received definitive answers on how and when those funds will be expended. Many of these conditions also raise serious mental health concerns. Given these dangerous and unhealthy conditions, it is critical that Woden's CIP timeline be accelerated and not suffer further delays. In doing so, we must track the deployment of approved funding to ensure construction work is completed timely for its intended use. We now turn to Dufif Elementary, where, as you know, a major expansion project was previously approved and scheduled to commence to address overutilization and serious repairs, but was removed from the CIP list without any warning or contingency plans. Since then, several critical maintenance projects have been denied and temporary fixes instead employed in anticipation of a much larger project that never happened. Although we appreciate the recommendation for a feasibility study for Dufif, the upcoming process, this second time around, should be accelerated and fully funded, followed by concrete action, because most of the planning work was previously done. Next, there are still lingering issues at Lakewood Elementary that remain unresolved. In particular, there are still water drainage problems in the back grassy area and a crumbling playground which is more than 20 years old and has been on the replacement waitlist for several years. We can no longer wait because these amenities' unsafe conditions renders them useless. This brings us to Cole Spring Elementary. While we are encouraged by the recommended major capital project and feasibility study, we want to emphasize that the scope and funding, again, be as broad as possible to address the school's unique characteristics. As mentioned repeatedly, its open classroom concept without Florida ceiling walls or doors and hallways and rooms which, as said tonight, are unsafe for students to navigate safely. Cole Spring must remain on the CIP list. Finally, Frost Middle School, which was built in 1971 without a major renovation since, should also be considered for a future feasibility study. In closing, years of advancing other projects at the expense of the Woden Cluster has resulted in a unique set of aggravating circumstances. We therefore ask for a commitment of full funding of our projects through completion and, again, acceleration of the timeline. Assessing the needs of our schools merely through enrollment does not do it justice. Additionally, smart capital improvement projects would permit more efficient utilization of our schools, thus it's cheaper to address these now. Lastly, the county does not advance its goals of equity by placing a weight on, greater weight on, other clusters. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avi Silver. Please come forward.
I press the red button, right?
You're good now.
Good evening, President Silvestri, Dr. McKnight, and members of the board. My name is Avi Silver, and I am a PTSA member, a union member, a voter, a Northwest High School teacher, and I am the sponsor for the Secret Society of Science Songwriters, a club where students write, record, film, and edit music videos to teach science concepts to their peers and communities. It's an energetic group, which brings me to our issue. I'm advocating for our school to have a more comprehensive look at, surprise, surprise, our HVAC system, to be added to the CIP because it's really hard to work with an energetic group in a hot room. Echoing Mr. Gerard and other groups here, it seems like HVAC is a theme. Since this May, the Northwest Building Service staff has submitted 150 total work orders, 76 of which, which is more than half, were HVAC-related, and 46 of those are still open work order, and that's 60%. Open work orders include overheating rooms, blower motors and valves not working, multiple leaks—I'm told the kids call it "ceiling juice"—sensors not working, floods, et cetera. Because of our leaky, old, and frankly just underperforming and overperforming system, it's unbearably hot when the heat is running in some rooms, 80 and 90 at times, and unbearably cold in others when the AC is running, 60 and below at times. I've worked in Northwest for the past 12 years, and this is not a new issue. You may have noticed I'm wearing shorts. I will tell you I wear shorts now even in days where it's sub-zero outside, and I do mean Fahrenheit, knowing that my classroom is reliably over 80 degrees. Those of us in the hot parts of the building, the tropics, resolved to open our windows and run fans, but even with this, I could only get me down from 87 degrees when I came in this morning to 84 degrees when I left. And on those sub-zero days, nature's AC can only bring my ambient temperature down to 79, not much better or within the recommended range for learning. And I'm not alone. Today, I asked around at a staff meeting for other teachers to share the temperatures in their room. In the 10 people I talked to, four of them had rooms between 60 and 65 degrees, five of them had rooms above 78, and one of them was at 76. Indeed, one person shared her office last year went to 96 degrees. This might have been surprising if my room hadn't hit 92 weeks ago. You can literally feel the different climates in the building as you walk the halls and enter and exit classrooms. Myself, my colleagues, and students who are in my classes and who participate in my after-school clubs have shared that we have frequent headaches after school, feel faint, have trouble processing as a result of the heat. My colleagues in cold rooms don't report feeling much better. Colleagues have had health-related issues and have had to go home and/or talk to their doctor because of the building conditions. For these reasons, we are requesting a complete HVAC overhaul and/or replacement from Northwest High School to be added to the CIP. We are looking for solutions because the situation's rough, but even many of the short-term solutions aside from the CIP require approval or change in protocols. One, we've been told part of the problem might be that the sun beats on the southern wall of the school. We're solution-oriented. In our chemistry classes, we teach that we can increase the albedo of the school by painting the outer surface white reflecting more of the sun's rays. Indeed, if we did that on the outer section by my room, we could also write on it, "Let's Go Jazz," and you'd be able to see it from the stadium which we overlook. This would require approval, and we would love input on how to proceed. Given that we're told that staffing is limited to keep up with the burden of issues with HVAC, our system, we would suggest additional units that we could use to remediate our rooms that we could control, much like exist in portables. I promise you, we could not be more wasteful than we are right now with windows open and heat running, or consequently, the same with AC running and windows open in our Arctic regions. I'm here before you today because this has become the central issue in my own health and well-being, as well as my students and as well as my colleagues, and I promise you, you're not the first to hear these concerns. I've read the notes of the past CIP meetings, budget meetings, et cetera, and have seen that HVAC overhauls are often on the chopping block when it comes to the budget. I sat with about half of the county council members last year during the budget cycle, and I'd happily do so again on behalf of this issue. Please let me know what myself, my colleagues, our PTSA, and our students can do to advocate for funding at the county, state, and any other level you deem appropriate, and I will be there in a heartbeat. And I'm a biologist. I know about heartbeats. I also have a statement on behalf of Diamond Elementary School, part of the Northwest Cluster. It has a request for windows replace— for window replacement, not the computers. The current windows do not open, and there's need for fresh air, air circulation, and natural light. Most importantly, opening windows should be in place for any necessary safety evacuation. Additionally, there is a request for interior windows in the inner hallway classrooms as well, again, for light and safety evacuations. Thank you for your time. My name's Avi Silver, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Northwest Cluster. My email is on my statement that I think is passed out to you, and I emailed this afternoon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teddy Wu. Please come forward.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. McKnight, and MCPs senior staff. My name is Teddy Wu. I'm a current president of Haley Wells Middle School, PTSA. I have two daughters in that school, and I'm one of the cluster coordinators for Clarksburg. After six years of coming to testify, I would also like to thank you for completing two schools— Snowden Farm Elementary School and Cameron Branch Elementary School—in the past few years. I would like to, again, bring attention to the overcapacity at Clarksburg High School. Even with the classroom expansion in 2017, the boundary changes with Sinica Valley High School, the school continues to have a fleet of relocatable classrooms. Since 2012 to 2013 academic years till now, the school has had at least 11 temporary classrooms. This year, there are 14. With the projection of increasing population to 2026 of over 350 students in a 2,000-capacity building, the plan currently to relieve this overcrowding depends on another school boundary, which is Damascus High School. And I urge you, urge the board, to keep up, keep that on track so that their major capital project can be completed by August 27, so that our school can get some relief from the other side, as my understanding is that our school, Clarksburg High School, has no capacity to be enlarged or expanded. Additional items that we have collected from the cluster schools, directly from Clarksburg High School. The school is grateful for the portables, which is the ones that I described, the 14, but they are in need, some of them are in need of replacement. The portables are dilapidated and past the point of sufficient repairs. Eight portables are over a decade old, four are over 15 years old, and they received, they said they were received back in 2006. They're just old, and they just need to be replaced. Different things break, they stopped working, and they stitched them back together, but they break again. The school asks that the replacements be installed and all portables be located in a central location, not split between two sides of the campus. And additionally, their auditorium floor needs to be refurbished and repainted, the carpet in the auditorium and the media center needs to be replaced as well. These are just main routine upkeeps that probably should not be discussed in CIP, but sometimes it just doesn't quite make it to the list on the repair schedule. Rocky Hill Middle School, they need to improve their safety access in the school, again, specifically the need of camera security in the presence of blind spots around the school. In addition, they've noted additional, noted the addition of doors on certain restroom under the category of restroom renovations. So I'm not quite sure what's going on inside the bathrooms, but they need to be fixed in that case. Cedar Grove Elementary School is suffering through, much like other schools, with their HVAC. They have placed many work orders, as you've heard in previous testimonies, and these are, they're asking that folks look into the update slash replacement of HVAC in the older parts of the building. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the Clarksburg Cluster. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Donart. Please come forward.
I'll be speaking on behalf of Hannah. She is at homesick with her child, Poolsville Cluster Coordinator. The Poolsville Cluster appreciates the opportunity to provide feedback to the many individuals throughout MCPs who impact capital projects. We request that the needs of our cluster remain in the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2023 capital budget and the fiscal year 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvements Program, CIP. We would like to thank you for committing to the ongoing modernization of Poolsville High School, replacement of Monocacy Elementary School's HVAC system, and the repair of John Poole Middle School sidewalks. In this testimony, we would like to reiterate several CIP requests and ask that they be prioritized. First, I'm sorry, for the ongoing Poolsville High School modernization, we would like to request the following. First, continue to provide funding for the ongoing modernization project to ensure completion by the spring break 2024 completion of Phase 1 as approved by the BOE with no more delay. Second, provide adequate funding for Phase 2 and the main gym expansion as promised, as well as funding to modern, to modernize the athletic fields as part of the existing project so that all of our school facilities are equally upgraded and consistent in utility and appearance with each other. Third, in terms of building service staffing, PHS is not staffed as a high school due to the MCPs staffing formulas, and this has been even more of an issue during the construction process. We request additional building service staff to ensure upkeep and removal of contaminants for a school on an active construction site. Fourth, Poolsville High School is grateful that this modernization project has been prioritized. However, our school community continues to advocate for safer, science-driven construction practices and better communication during active school construction in occupied schools to minimize the risk to health and safety of students and staff. The MCCPTA Health and Wellness and CIP committees have partnered with MCPs to create the Safer School Construction Work Group, where we are collaborating to develop stronger policies and best practices to provide safe and healthy learning environments in schools undergoing construction, such as Poolsville High School and Silver Spring International Middle School. However, this takes time. Meanwhile, construction continues at PHS and Sims. As one example, today roofing and fireproofing continued while school was in session. There was no clear information provided ahead of time on the materials being used, nor was there any information given about potential safeguards in place to protect students and staff during such higher-risk activities. This comes after a year where students and staff have had recurring symptoms resulting from exposure to roofing fumes, such as what led to an early school shutdown last February. And one of your favorite subjects, HVAC replacement. Additionally, we have one outstanding HVAC replacement request. We would like updates on, and again, request that these projects be prioritized in the coming year. We know that better indoor air quality promotes a healthier learning environment for all, with lower staff and student absenteeism, increased test scores, and many other co-benefits. Poolsville Cluster thanks leadership for recognizing this and funding the much-needed replacement of Monocacy Elementary School's HVAC system. However, we would like to request that the HVAC in John Poole Middle School main office and another unit in one of the hallways be updated, as they do not work properly with temperatures close to 90 degrees in the summer. Planned lifecycle replacement, PLR. We would also like to request the maintenance plans for filtered water bottle filling stations for all of the cluster schools, including filter maintenance, air raider cleaning, and other spec requirements. In addition, we would like to ask for funding for more filtered water bottles, bottle filling stations to be installed in all of the cluster schools except for Monocacy, which is on well water and uses bottled water only. Thank you for working with us to ensure a healthier, safer learning environment for all of our students. We look forward to hearing from you and receiving updates on our various requests.
Thank you. Since we only have four speakers remaining, we're going to continue and then take questions at the end. Our next is a video testimony. If we could get Norm Gordon's video to please play.
Dr. McKnight, board members and staff, I am sorry I could not be present in person tonight, but I will be on a plane during this meeting. I'm Norm Gordon. I am not the Watkinsville Cluster Coordinator, but I am honored to speak on behalf of this cluster that has been such a blessing to my daughter. First, the good news. Taken over the horizon at the corner of Route 118 and Route 355 in Germantown is now the complete exterior of the brand-new Nielsville Middle School, a state-of-the-art facility which will feature lots of sunlight, a huge courtyard in the middle, a spacious design, and a commanding view of Upper Montgomery County from multiple angles. Most importantly, it is scheduled to open September 2024. Thank you, Board of Education, for holding on to your promise to open this badly needed facility in time. Not to be outdone, the staff and students at South Lake Elementary are already enjoying their new digs, which just opened this fall and features a colorful front facade and adequate space for their 790 enrolled students. Meanwhile, Watkinsville Elementary is now fully utilizing their brand-new front entrance. Again, thank you for providing an excellent learning environment for the kids of our families in the northern end of Gathersburg. Now on to yet-to-be-addressed needs of our cluster. You'll be happy to know that no more communities are asking for brand-new school buildings. Everybody, please breathe a big sigh of relief. But just because you haven't heard from Montgomery Village Middle School for a while doesn't mean they aren't similar but critical and urgent updates needed there. We bring two pressing concerns to your attention. One, we need additional crossing guard support for our students. Currently, we only have one crossing guard at our school in the morning and afternoon. That guard is placed at a crosswalk that cuts straight across from our school to the shopping center across the street. But we also have two big crossing areas on either side at the intersections of Watkinsville Road and Clubhouse. Mill Road and Clubhouse and Watkins Mill Road and Stedwick. While those two intersections do have lights, we have had increased issues with students versus cars in the past few years. Safety is most important, and we feel that extra support is needed to keep our kids safe crossing the street. Secondly, another very much-needed item is a new bell system. The bell system that Montgomery Village Middle School has is ancient. The staff is unable to program it themselves when a bell schedule changes. This year alone, they had to wait six weeks after a request for a change to the bells before someone came out to update it. While waiting for a work order to be completed, ringing the bells becomes a manual process of the main office secretaries setting a timer and remembering to ring the bells, as if they got nothing else to do. We need a computer-programmable bell system that can be programmed on the spot in-house. And now, dear to my heart, my daughter's alma mater, Watkins Mill High School, home of the Wolverines, go Rees. We have a wonderful building, but certain features of the campus have not been updated since it opened in 1989, rendering them woefully obsolete and poorly functioning. It is an embarrassment to athletes and their families when hosting guest teams. Specifically, in the gymnasium, the bleachers, the sound system, the scoreboards, and the basketball hoops all needed to be replaced yesterday. Likewise, the lobby outside the gymnasium is half the size it needs to be and cannot possibly hold two teams and all their guests. Its entrance needs to be bumped out to prevent dangerously packed crowds coming and going into such a small lobby. The weight room downstairs is also cramped, overcrowded with equipment and a sore spot for athletes trying to train for their sport. Last but not least, there is no locker room during the halftime for athletes using the stadium. It would take 10 minutes to cross the campus and get to the locker rooms located on the far side of the building, and so they just sit out in the cold during the halftime. In fact, the whole press box and concession building needs to be reconceived to fully function for all the school and regional competitions held at that facility. In sum, thank you for seeing the new facilities at South Lake and Nielsville through to their finish. Now let's take care of some of the much, much less expensive but equally urgent improvements at our other, at our other middle school, Montgomery Village, and our high school. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is also a video from Haley Clemmer. Please play the video.
Good evening, Board President Silvestri, Board members, and MCPS staff. I am Haley Clemmer, one of the MCCPTA Seneca Valley Cluster Coordinators, and thank you for the opportunity to testify about the capital improvement needs in our schools. My testimony covers two specific and urgent CIP requests from S. Krista McAuliffe Elementary School and Dr. Sally K. Wright Elementary School. Number one, at S. Krista McAuliffe Elementary School, there is a need for fencing to create a clear boundary between the school and the adjacent apartment complex. The growing foot traffic from these apartments to the shopping center across the street has given rise to serious safety concerns. For school safety, school administrators and staff have had to take action during recess as random individuals, sometimes accompanied by pets, cut across the backfield, posing a risk to student safety. We also request additional fencing for the front grass area of the school to reduce significant and repeated damage to this area on the school site. Krista McAuliffe also faces extreme sun exposure in the back recess area. In the past, we had portables equipped with awnings that provided much-needed shade for students during recess, particularly in the hot months. Unfortunately, when the portables were removed, the awnings went with them, leaving our students without a place to seek respite from the sun's sweltering heat. Without this area, there is a risk of heat exhaustion, sunburn, and exacerbation of some medical conditions. We kindly request the replacement of these awnings and/or the installation of a shade structure such as an outdoor classroom. Number two, Dr. Sally K. Wright Elementary School needs critical upgrades that are essential for safety and efficiency of the school. One needed upgrade is a swipe card system for the recess door. The current system, which only locks from the inside and lacks a key, leaves the school vulnerable during recess time. Implementing an access control system is not a luxury, but rather a necessity to ensure student safety. Dr. Sally K. Wright Elementary School also requests funding for a new PA system. A new functional PA system is necessary for effective and efficient communication within the school for staff and students. These are practical needs that have a direct impact on our school's safety and functionality. Thank you, and we look forward to working with our schools and MCPS to implement these requests.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa McKenna. Please come forward.
It's wonderful to see you. I hope you are feeling better, and we look forward to seeing you in this building again soon. This is 10 years here. So tonight I have four points. First, thank you very much for putting a completion date on Eastern Middle School. That has been holding in the ether of never-ending as long as I've been around. Now the question is, where will those students go during construction without a middle school holding school? Farquhar, Odessa Shannon, and Nielsville Middle could only move forward because they had sufficient land elsewhere while still occupying the old school. Secondly, it's too expensive for MCPS to continue tearing down and rebuilding schools. This is not the first year I've mentioned this. We also came up with a cool name for it called Refresh. High schools alone, Crown, 194 million, Northwood, 203 million, Woodward, 196 million, may or may not include performing arts and fields. That's $593 million for three, for three schools. Nothing against them, this is the way the world is now, but the six-year CIP was not tenable with three high schools, how will it manage with four more? That said, Clarksburg needs more space. 14 portables, Teddy, I'm sorry, you need more space. Of course, all of this brings me back to build and renovate to net-zero energy schools. Basta. It's time. We can't have the schools costing more and taking more operating funds. Fourth, funding constraints lie ahead. It feels like I should have one of those big construction triangles. Thank you, Ms. Karen Mihas, for your thorough explanation of CIP funding during the October 31st BOE presentation, especially state funding. Without built-to-learn funds, MCPS state aid has been fairly consistent in the 40- to 50-million-dollar range. I've included a table in my written testimony, but I will repeat the footnote you included. For FY '25, IAC voted to freeze CIP funding targets to FY '23 levels. For MCPS, that allocation would be approximately 51 million, including EGRC funds. So why even request $237.9 million? Please concentrate instead on the remaining 32.2 million after roof and HVAC replacements. As an aside, it would be helpful, I think, for everyone to know what happened to the FY '24 2.5 million appropriation for materials management relocation, as I share that effort with my friends in Rockville. Finally, please reschedule to have more time and return to a 7:00 PM hearing so that more of these advocates and parents can be here in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Noreen Khadir.
Push the, the mic, the button underneath the mic, underneath the microphone. There you go. They did it for you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Noreen Khadir, and I'm the previous Coal Spring PTA president. I'm here today to thank you for adding Coal Spring to the CIP. Our community is waiting for a date for the start of the feasibility study. Today, I want to take you on a virtual tour to Coal Spring Elementary, and I want to share five things that we need now. Before I start, I want to share that the Coal Springs community fully supports the request for new buildings for our Cluster High School Wooton and for our other Cluster School, DeFef Elementary. So let's start. First slide, next slide. Our cafeteria tables are from 1974, and they're not made anymore. The issue is that some of the tables are broken, so they have to be replaced with folding chairs, classroom chairs, and folding tables. Next slide. The benches are not attached to the table, so it's hard for students to sit on them. Can you go to the next slide? It's not safe and challenging for our young students. My first immediate request is for new cafeteria tables. We have an area to store new tables. Next slide. Next, I would like to highlight our school kitchen, which is original in 1974. We have two freezers to store food, but it's a challenge for our cafeteria manager. Next slide. Coal Spring is the only, is probably the only open school in the county, and it has no walls. I say no walls, but the teachers and staff must create walls to divide the large spaces. Next slide. This is my second immediate request is for classroom dividers. Next slide. Our classroom spaces will benefit from dividers. Teachers makeshift rooms with furniture, but it's not secure. Next slide. They use bookshelves, classroom cubbies, and tables to do this. Next slide. Next slide. And next slide. And the next slide. My third immediate request is for a new water filter. Our lead levels are elevated probably because of our old pipes, so we would like to request for a water bottle filter, which is locate, this water filter, this water fountain is located near the gym and close to the playground. Next slide. I would like to highlight an ongoing maintenance issue that we have at our school. We have a water leak from a ceiling, and poor Miss Springs' first-grade classroom bulletin board is constantly wet. Next slide. My fourth immediate request is for new carpets. Did you know that a large majority of our school is carpeted? All of the classrooms are carpeted to reduce noise because we are an open school. Coal Spring has large areas of carpets that have never been replaced. Next slide. In second grade, we have a humidity issue and the carpets are bubbling, which leads to students tripping and creating a safety hazard. Next slide. We have learned from MCS maintenance that the entire second-grade carpeting would need to be replaced, and probably in other areas in our school. My, my fifth and immediate request is for soundproofing in our classrooms. Soundproofing would be an excellent addition to our classrooms. Thank you so much, and please remember my five asks.
Thank you. I will now turn to my colleagues to see if they have any comments or questions. I will start with Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you again, everybody. And I'm assuming, I'm looking at Mr. Adams, that all the specific issues that folks are mentioning, you're tracking those, so there can be follow-up about the paint and the fences and that kind of thing.
Yes, much, much of what was described tonight, certainly, we're tracking through our maintenance teams, and, and we have obviously communicated various aspects, but what we've also learned is that, you know, sharing that information out further to students and families is critical. So as we continue into this, this winter and the spring, it's going to be a big initiative for us is to be able to communicate the status of where we are, what projects are happening, when to expect some of the fixes to become improved. So stay tuned on that, but we're definitely trending in a very good place to be able to share.
And a month and a half ago or so, at a board meeting, you presented a really great facility-wide maintenance plan that reflected the reorganization of the division, the facilities So, and I think that includes a very much upgraded and more efficient method of putting in maintenance requests. And we've had a lot of folks talk tonight about the opacity of those kinds, they'll say, you know, people have been requesting for months and months and nothing happens. I thought that that facilities management system, that, that online tracking system was publicly available, so people could look and see what maintenance requests have gone in, what the response has been, what the timeline, is that not the case?
So it is a new work order system that's in its first year of deployment, so the phase-two work is to start to share public facing our order. One of the things that we're working through is there's definitely certain things that we do not want to see public. I think I mentioned that before, some security requests that may come through. But filtering through and making that public is what the, the company that we hired as part of this work order system is, is obviously working on to figure out how to make that a public domain. But I would say the, we also have other public information that's available, you know, the indoor air quality sensors that are now in every classroom, we publish, you know, that on our website. We'll be pushing that out soon so that everyone can find that easier, but you can see what's happening in each classroom. It shows an average for each school, but we're using that to be more proactive versus reactive in our, in our work order approach, in our HVAC approach. So a lot of good things happening, and hopefully very soon we'll be able to update the board and show you some, some visuals of what, what families can see on, on the website.
And a lot of HVAC issues. I, I thought we had, had one, but I didn't find it in the, in the capital budget book for FY '25, a list of HVAC projects. Is that on the website so people can, can see the projects that are being, where they are in the queue?
So historically-
Mr. Adams, could you put the mic closer? It's hard in here.
So historically, we, we have published the six-year list to, to the board members following CIP process, but as you, as you've heard, the countywide HVAC program is typically one of the programs that's focused on as part of reconciliation of the county. Just as a reminder, you know, MCPS is not a funding body, you know, so as they go, as the board makes its request to the county executive and county council, the county works through all agency CIP processes. They go through what they call reconciliation at the very end, where they really try to balance the budgets. Our countywide, particularly HVAC, has been one of those programs that has been historically first on the list, even though that is one of the highest priorities that, that we have pushed forward as, as a school district. So we've been a bit apprehensive to just show, show everything from a six-year because that funding has fluctuated so significantly over time. But as we talked to, you know, some of our, some of the board members and other county activists, it, it does start to make sense to publish, but to be very clear about what the funding expectations would need to be, what the state aid request would be in order for these projects to be, come to fruition. But as you've heard, one of the things that we obviously balance is, you know, if there's delays, just managing that, and disappointment comes with that. But you will hear at the next work session, part of the comprehensive maintenance plan is, is to be more proactive and start to show what the operating expenses are by seeing some of these capital cuts on replacement. So we're hopeful that we'll give the tools to our advocates to help navigate the, the funding process through county executive, county council process moving forward. So, so to answer your question, it's not published today, but we, we will be publishing that soon.
Okay. And then my last question gets, I really appreciate Mr. Silver's testimony. I think his suggestion to paint that south-facing exterior wall white is, is brilliant. Why don't we just, I mean, we should just do that. But when we look at schools that have the kind of issues that Northwest is experiencing, and at our, our last fiscal management committee meeting on the 19th of September, and again, at our next fiscal management committee meeting next week, we've been talking about the energy savings performance contracting work the system is doing, and I believe we're starting in 100 schools? Is that right for the first phase of that work?
That's correct, 100 schools.
And are we prioritizing schools like Northwest that sort of have these dramatic issues when it relates to HVAC and, and differing conditions, climatic conditions in the building throughout the day, for those to be in that first 100 that get that work?
Yes, that's a great question. Our high schools obviously are the biggest energy producers, so those are obvious buildings, facilities for the consultants to look at, and obviously HVAC is a, is a major contributor. So, so a school like Northwest is part of the investment-grade audit work that's happening from the consultants. But I also say is we're not waiting on that. So we have, we're working through a replacement of the control system at Northwest, where we've procured the, the rehab of the cooling tower at Northwest. So, so there's elements that we're doing independent of, of that work, but that is going to be critical work for us to move forward because it will not tax the CIP. It'll be work that's able to be completed of replacements using energy savings. So things you heard about, you know, gymnasium lighting, you know, other HVAC control type of replacements, we're, we're hopeful that that work can happen sort of independent of the CIP and, and, and independent of our operating budget so that we're able to make some major headway, not relying just on bond dollars and other revenue sources that Ms. Karen Mihas had mentioned at the previous work session. at the previous work session.
Because I think the energy savings performance work we're doing is essential to achieve our sustainability, the goals we set forth in our sustainability policy and our efforts to become a net-zero system. And so it'd be interesting to know how we can share very, you know, can really saturate our communities with information about what that energy savings performance contracting work is and what they'll see happening in their schools when we go through this first round of 100, because I think people are germanely really interested that, to see what we're doing and what that's going to mean and how they can be part of that work. So just how we can do a better job of really sharing that information with our schools.
Mrs. Vandrowski?
Yes, first I just want to say thank you to everybody for testifying today. Ms. Harris pretty much literally stated everything that I had on my paper, so I won't be repetitive. But I did want to just say, you know, we always hear a lot of testimony about kind of what seems like small things, replacing windows, painting buildings, stuff like that. And I know that you guys do a lot of those type of projects, particularly during the summertime and whatever. Is there anywhere that we list work that you are currently doing or have just done so that people can see, like, aside from just the work orders, the things that need to be done, but maybe things that have been completed?
And that is a great question. So what we publish is the work that happened the previous summer. What we need to do obviously is start to plan out and publish what we expect to happen in the future, similar to the HVAC program. But in Appendix K, I believe, in the CIP, we list all of our planned lifecycle asset replacement. And you'll see that sort of work trends over time. You can see different aspects of the things they do, whether windows, doors, paint, you know, all those types of things fall under that particular category. But again, similar to the HVAC, it's a countywide, and we've seen some significant impacts from the reconciliation process over the years. But one thing I would say is through our Facility Condition Index work that we've done to really identify everything, that is the greatest need, casework, paint, windows, doors. So again, you know, we see and hear a lot about HVAC, but this HEAR work, planned lifecycle asset placement, is just as critical to our schools.
Yeah, I think it has a much bigger impact sometimes than even a whole new building because it affects so many more schools, so thank you.
I am going to be a little repetitive because I don't, I couldn't hear you, so I don't know if the whole auditorium heard you, but just make sure that I heard you correctly. We've heard several people say that, here we are again, asking for the same things. And I think I heard you say that things have gotten done. You've communicated that to maybe school leaders, but you need to now make sure that the parent and student community is also hearing what changes you have done throughout the year so that they know things got done. Not everything's going to get done, I get it, but you will be now communicating directly with families and students so that they know what's gotten done. Is that correct?
Yes, so we've actually had some really powerful partnerships with our students. Mr. Said really has been a big proponent of developing and helping develop a way for us to have feedback with students. So to know what's going on in buildings, to be able to respond to, you know, how we're resolving it and the timeline, just to be very clear. So I think that work definitely is going to translate well into, you know, communicating with our families to supplement, you know, the work of work orders. And I think it's important because you may see a work order, but if it doesn't show you what is happening in terms of how it's going to be fixed, when it's going to be fixed, that's still going to be an outstanding question. So giving that information is something that we're working through, and I would say thank you to Mr. Said because it's been really tremendous opportunity to work with students to really understand, you know, what's missing so that we can figure out ways to provide that information.
And the public-facing part of the dashboard, you said that's part two. When do you expect that will be ready for the public?
So we're still working on that right now with the consultant. I mean, the goal that we're working towards is a rollout for the next school year. But there are pieces that we want to bring online sooner. Again, I mentioned, you know, such as the indoor equality work, you know, if there's things that we can develop for feedback with students, you know, we want to continue this work as we progress towards the public-facing work order system. But that's the goal, is for it to be live for the next school year, 24, 25 school year.
Okay, thank you. And then for HVAC, you recognize that there's a huge backlog of HVAC projects throughout the county, and you said that that seems to be what gets cut at the next phase of this process because it's not a school community in particular, it's just, okay, HVAC funding, let's cut that because we have to cut something. And so that's the reality that we live in. We will continue to work with our elected officials so that they know that this is affecting school communities, is affecting the quality of life of everyone, current company included. And so anything else to add on that? I mean, we are, we did restore some HVAC funding last, in the last budget cycle, and that will stretch that as much as possible.
And Dr. McKnight's recommendation is a pretty significant increase to bring it up into line with what we need for our backlog work. But I would say, you know, these are areas too. It's really easy to stand in front of a brand-new school and rally around, look at the great things, but an HVAC system is hidden, so it's still very important. So I think, again, you know, continuing the momentum about why that funding is important, and even rallying around the schools where we do the replacements, even though you can't see it, you know, but to be able to see the impacts of it is going to be important from advocacy and a communication piece.
I have some more, but I'm going to wait till my colleagues get their turn.
Yeah.
Mr. Said?
Yeah, I'll make sure to be brief because I think you all covered most of the ground. I do want to say, yes, you know, it's been great to partner with the work of trying, you know. For context, what we're trying to do now is help us develop a better method of communication for students to report issues that they're seeing in their schools in regards to a number of facility issues, mainly HVAC issues. So we're trying to, I know that, you know, Lynn is in contact with some fantastic students at Silver Spring International Middle School who are actually working to develop a website, an app, to report this, and they're already field testing at Silver Spring International Middle School. So we hope to, as that grows and as that builds, a student-led, student-piloted app, we can look at maybe for future implementation, you know, obviously this is way off in the future, but we really need to ensure that, you know, students are seeing these issues, that they're reporting it directly back to you 100%. And then real quick, I want to bring up something I did bring up before, but I think it's definitely pertinent now because we have, you know, people in the community here. I think it's a question that, you know, I always want to bring up, you know, when we have people, which is about Wooton High School. I know we've had a lot of the similar, you know, talks about it, so, you know, let's really talk about it, you know, just some general things. Why was it pushed back so much? Is it possible to accelerate the completion date at Wooton High School? And will it be pushed back further? And just, you know, while we have a crowd here, let's try and answer those questions. So I know I talked about this before, but can you give a response to answer those specific questions?
Sure. And I would say Wooton, that's an important one because it's been a, it's been a part of the CIP for many years. Wooton was identified under the previous program called the Modernization Revitalization Program. It was one of the schools that was sort of next in line. Through our work with the board around equity of our CIP process, worked with the County Council, we took a step back and developed the key facility indicators, looked at it from, obviously, a global facility perspective, and came up with the major capital projects approach. So when that program came out, Wooton was still a priority, but there were other schools that rose to the top in terms of priority. So when you think about Wooton, Wooton has seen probably the most significant delay, particularly from the previous program to the program that we have today. Fast forward to what we've experienced over the past several years is that there have been funding challenges associated with inflation, you know, other factors, revenues at the local level, at the state level. Built to Learn has been a huge help to all school districts, but Built to Learn also has really been able to manage and mitigate much of the inflation that we've experienced with our projects. So as we move forward, you heard testimony today about, are we doing things differently? Are we building differently? And the answer is yes, you know, but as you're hearing, you know, going in and just doing a limited renovation at a school like Wooton is not appropriate. So what we're doing is obviously looking at it from, what is high-impact work that can happen immediately, around ADA, other, you know, impacts in the school. We did have one community meeting this summer, and we heard loud and clear that, hey, you know, we need to look at it more holistically, not just the site work, not just ADA. We want to see improvements in our restrooms, we want to see improvements for everyday life from students. So our team has been, you know, working in that building with consultants, and we want to come back here, I believe probably the start of next month, to go over what we found around immediate impacts that we can do at Wooton. The next piece is your question around, can it be accelerated? While we have some plans to do some immediate, hopefully high-impact work, the board can always request acceleration of projects, and we can certainly come back with what the fiscal impact would be to the overall CIP. But I would say that, you know, as you heard in our first work session, you know, understanding what's happening at the county level, at the state level is important. So the board can ask, but truly understanding what the revenue sources look like, what the fiscal climate looks like is going to be important. So that's certainly something that we can talk through at the next work session around what acceleration looks like, what the funding would look like, what it means from an annual expenditure perspective year by year. But yes, certainly that's an option for the board to do so.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate you really going into that, and I think the community definitely appreciates that as well. So that was very informative, and I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Silvestre. So go ahead.
Mr. Vettavon?
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you to all the cluster leaders for coming out tonight. I do have a couple of questions. The issue of landline phones, what's our policy on that in our schools, especially in high schools? Because I can tell you that even in this building, I have issues sometimes with connecting, with making calls or getting calls. So I'm very curious because I think Mr. Weber brings a very vital point, that it is, it is a safety issue. So I just want to...
Even some of our new schools, like we toured Harriet Tubman, and I couldn't get any kind of...
And that's a very new school.
It's brand new.
Very new school. So if you could enlighten us.
I can address that from a technology standpoint. So as far as landlines, not all of our classrooms are wired to have landlines in them. It really depends on when the school was built. That has determined whether or not landlines are accessible and wired into every single classroom. And regarding to cell phones, we can't necessarily, as you know, control cell service in every place. What we have been advising schools and working with different schools on is enabling Wi-Fi calling on cell phones. So if you have Wi-Fi, if you enable the Wi-Fi calling feature on your cell phone and you are connected to the MCPS network, you can make and receive phone calls by using the Wi-Fi so that you don't have to use cellular service to do so. That includes 911 calling. That is the best solution we have right now. We have tried the extenders that they have put in the buildings that our vendors, like AT&amp;T, now called FirstNet, has tested in the building to boost the signal, and they have not proven to effectively boost the cellular service signal in the buildings. There are other options that can be explored that involve rewiring our buildings and also putting antennas on the roofs of the buildings that can be very costly, upwards of $150,000 for a very small building, to when you think about the size of our high school, could be triple that. So those are what the different options are that can be explored. But right now, we have been working with schools who have talked about the cell phone signals and is making sure that all of their phones are utilizing the Wi-Fi calling feature.
Do students know that that's a thing?
It is, yeah. I mean, if they don't, we're happy to make sure that we're educating everybody, but they have to be hooked up to the network in order to enable Wi-Fi calling. So if they don't hook up to the Wi-Fi in the schools and they just want to go off their cellular, then the Wi-Fi calling feature doesn't work.
Okay, so that's still not, it's still not making sense to me. As a parent, it's still concerned. So take a school like Springbrook, right, that the testimony was based on, that's not a new school. And I can tell you, when I was with the Board of Elections, we have to have landlines to be able to connect and, you know, to be able to make sure that those were working and were working properly. So I don't know if I'm a dinosaur, but please, Seth, help me out here because I know that when I was at a What Is Land? meeting the other day, I had the same issue with the phone, and they had, you know, they have landline phones in the office. But then, you know, you have special programs, you have programs with kids with special needs and so on, those rooms did not have a landline phone. So again, for me, this is an issue of safety. As much as I love technology, sometimes technology is not 100% reliable.
So, and these are great questions. One thing I would say, just from a safety standpoint, so every classroom has a callback, you know, so they can call at the office. The other thing that we've been talking about quite a bit is our security infrastructure and modernizing that. You will hopefully see, and at one of the upcoming board meetings, you know, pilot work around an alert management system that we're hopeful to deploy and pilot to see how successful that can be. But there are limitations to what we can do just around cell service, you know, it is a limitation. And when we look at our CIP, I think you heard it several times, to make sure we're spending wisely. And so if we're going to spend money on something around communication, we want to make it a multifaceted safety, security, but also, you know, a system that our teachers, staff, and administrators are comfortable with. So we are going to pilot a variety of different safety and security infrastructure measures that we will certainly be bringing to you shortly. But long-term, I think it is also important to just talk about that there's a lot of systems out there that we want to start to bring into our buildings. We work around a lot of antiquated PA systems, you know, how do we integrate that with, you know, different functions in the classroom, you know, how do we integrate that with central office notifications, integrate it with technology with our box lights? So there's a lot of things that are happening that I know have been sort of briefly touched upon in our work over the years around safety and safety infrastructure, but you will start to see, hopefully, in either at the next board meeting or December board meeting, you know, work around this from a pilot perspective that we're really excited about.
Great, thank you. And just not to beat a dead horse, but the whole issue with HVAC has been, from the time I have been advocating and with the PTAs for years, from my days at Washington Grove as a student, till now with HVAC issues. We had to close early a couple of schools this summer to let students go home early because of HVAC issues. So it does have a very direct impact on our kids. So I guess it is my hope that when we look at the whole energy savings, that we do prioritize those schools who have been chronic offenders, if you will, those schools who had to close because of HVAC issues to be on the top 100 schools to have this energy plan. And enlighten me a little bit about Northwest, because my goddaughter goes to Northwest, and she came the other day to volunteer at the hub, and it was freezing outside, and she was wearing shorts and a tank top. And of course, I yelled at her as I, you know, and she said, "You would think twice if you had to be in my classroom because in my classroom is 80, you know, it's like 80-plus degrees." So why is Northwest, what is going on? Like, is it, does it have a separate system than everybody else? Is it like an orphan school when it comes to, I mean, I'm trying to understand, what is it about it? Because it's something that comes up repeatedly when I meet with parents, that it's just chaotic temperatures in there. And when I visited, you could tell from one side of the building, as you walk to the other, as they said, you know, it's like the tropics. So is it, what is it that makes it so chaotic in that sense when it comes to the fluctuation of temperature?
Yes, so Northwest has a malfunctioning control system. So, you know, it's very different than what you see in your house, right, the thermostat on your wall. But the control system at Northwest operates off of pneumatics, it's air pressure. It is an antiquated system, so part of our work is to replace that system with a digital system this coming summer. We've been able to do quite a bit of work on some of the central air handling units on the roof that's made a pretty big impact, but still there's classrooms that have this control system that's been really difficult for us to, you know, get it under control and have the appropriate temperatures. So that has been a priority for us to do that replacement work.
That is great to hear. So coming this summer...
Correct.
Okay, I hope he heard that, but I think my colleague Lynn's talking to him right now. So Clarksburg High School, this is where I'm... So Clarksburg High School, this is where my kids went to school and graduated from, portables were in place literally the year after Clarksburg was built, literally. We were one year without portables, and next year we had portables. I thought we had a lot of portables when my son graduated in 2020, but hearing that there is 14 portables, and I know that it's going to be some alleviation coming down the pipe with the construction of Damascus High School, but that's not soon enough. So what is, I guess my thing is, these portables, when they're old, they're awful to be in. It's awful for the morale, it's awful for the teachers who have to be there all year, it's awful for the kids who have to go to these portables. They're sm- they smell, I mean, they're awful. I don't know if you've been in one that is 15 years old, but they're awful. So I had no idea that we rent these portables and that we actually are not, we don't have ownership of them. So if we rent them, can we not have better quality or can, what's the, what's the quality of the process in making sure that our kids and the people that are teaching them are actually, at least is pleasant until we have something more tangible?
So I'll speak specific to Clarksburg, and then I'll go globally.
Okay.
But Clarksburg is a school where we've been working with the administration. We have a plan to replace the older portables at Clarksburg High School this coming summer. But also, within the Dr. McKnight's recommendation, is an increase in our relocatable program. And that work is to address some of our aging, our aged units in our inventory. Yes, they're leased, but the lease covers the replacement of HVAC roof, those elements. But what we do know is the lifecycle of these units is probably in that 10 to 15-year range. So we want to be much more aggressive in the future of replacing relocatables much sooner. But I would say, though, that at one point in time, the goal was not to have portables at school sites for a long period of time. As obviously, the fiscal climate has changed, that's become more of a reality, and that's why there is a bit of a pivot to go in and replace many more of these units than just to be able to build our way out of capacity issues. So that is something that, again, is part of the recommendation, is an increase in that to address exactly what you're talking about at Clarksburg High School.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Monocacy Elementary School, I visited Monocacy's beautiful community, this Pinterest looks out, you know, it's just beautiful. But the kids cannot drink from the water fountains. There is really no water fountain in the Monocacy Elementary that kids can drink from. It is, as someone said, the only school with well water in our county. Why is that?
There is no municipal water service to that school, so it does solely rely on a well system, which we obviously, you know, we provide bottled water to Monocacy for that purpose.
The parents there don't, I would love if they could be, if you could write something to the parents in the school about that, because the way it comes through is that this is not a priority for MCPS to be able to have, so the kids can drink water like it. And I think it would be great if something from us went to the parents and to that community to let them know that that's the case. McAuliffe Elementary School, I was there a few months ago, and when I was leaving, I actually encountered two people cutting through the playground on Monocacy, because the right on bus stop is right sideways to the school. So to get to the apartments, folks, there's a lot of, you know, folks who use that when our kids are in recess and so on. So it is, in my opinion, a safety issue. So I don't know what, if we're looking at it to ensure that that's something that it can be ratified.
And McAuliffe is a shared school park site. I think many of the crossings happen on the park property, so that's something that we have been working with our parks agency to see what are the options around fencing. We have been successful in the past, and there's been other locations where fencing has not been encouraged from other agencies. So we will revisit McAuliffe, but I know when we built the addition, that was something that we talked about, we looked at, we vetted with our agency partners, and it was not something that was supported at the time, but we can certainly revisit.
Yeah, if we could do that, that would be greatly appreciated. I think definitely there is foot travel that is not our parents or our kids in that community. And the last one is my issue with safety with the crosscar, Mongarve Village Middle School. I don't know who wants to talk about that, but I will encourage, Mrs. Dana, since you were wonderful in coming to see the issues that we had at the trailer park community when it came to the bus stop on 355. This is chaotic at its best when kids have to cross to go to Mongarve Village Middle School. People are in a rush. We have had really close calls. We have kids who got hit but not seriously injured. But one crosscar, and I know there is a shortage of crosscars, but one crosscar for that community, I can tell you is really not enough for the amount of kids that come from the different sides to that community. And people cut through that area to avoid the traffic on Mongarve Village Avenue because they know that the lights of the traffic are shorter in order to get to 270. So it's definitely an area that I would love for us to please have a team of transportation and safety to go and assess it, because it's definitely something that I think we want to avoid any serious injuries in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you. I've already heard you say you're not going to beat a dead horse, and I agree, the horse is already dead. But what I do want to ask is if someone could go out, Seth, and take a look at the plumbing system at Rosa Parks, I believe it was? I think that it is very difficult to work with smells coming into the main office. So I don't know if you have a work order for that, but if you could get somebody out there to look at it and get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Will do.
And I want to thank everyone else for coming to testify. I have your comments down, thank you.
Mrs. Madrowski?
Yeah, I'll be quick, but speaking of the dead horse, the Wooton situation, we previously allocated funds to start doing some of that ADA compliance work, correct? And have we used them?
So that's correct. So we started, we hired the consultant, I came to the board for approval, the consultant went out, did an assessment. We went out to the community that one time over the summer that you heard, and we decided to take a step back and see if there's, you know, not only the site work that we can improve, but also things inside the building that are maybe, I'm not going to come low-hanging through, but very, very high-impact projects that we can do, such as restrooms or other features that we've heard from our students over the years. So we plan to go back out to the community in next month, and the goal would be to finalize those designs and start construction of some of that work next summer.
Okay, I mean, I think we need to do everything we can. We have a program there that has children, at least 50% of them, if not more, are wheelchair-bound, and the teachers are picking them up and going above and beyond to support them there. But I don't know if it's going to take too much longer than after this summer. Maybe we should consider looking at moving that program to somewhere else, if that's something that, I don't know if that's something we've ever considered or not, but I just think it's the right thing to do to make sure that we can get those kids in and out safely and appropriately. I am excited about your pilot program for communication stuff. Hopefully, there'll be a panic button, like even in the bathrooms with that type of thing, because that's a terrible story to hear of someone sitting in the bathrooms, what if it had been at night? And then the last little thing I have is, do we go around and look? As I tour schools, sometimes I see kids pressed up against the building, and I'm like, I went up to a young boy the other day and was like, you know, "Are you okay?" He's like, "Yeah, it's just too hot, I can't get out of the sun." It seems like a minor thing, but it is kind of uncomfortable when you're overheated like that. So I don't know if we do a look around to see if all of our schools' outside area has at least some sort of shade component, but I think that we should.
And that's a good point. You know, one element to that, I think, is important is that as part of our sustainability policy, we are focused on our tree canopy. So, you know, we're, rather than just build shade structures, we are looking at it from sort of a dual purpose. Can we provide shade? Can we increase our tree canopy coverage, you know, as we're moving forward? So we have staff that are actively looking at individual schools around, can we make some of those types of improvements?
Great, thanks. Okay, I see no other lights. I want to thank everyone. Dr. McKnight, did you have any closing comments before we dismiss?
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Silvestri. So I wanted to thank everyone for coming out and giving the testimony that you shared and the staff. You know, it's so interesting, as we come to these hearings, oftentimes as we go through the CIP, one of the things I was reflecting on is sometimes when we're coming back and we have to talk about adjustments that we have to make in the CIP, I am not sure, even as we are talking through like communication, and tonight we were specifically talking about HVAC. And I know that's been one that in the past, we've had to come back and say, you know, because of the funding level that we've received, we've had to cut some of these pieces. And HVAC has actually been a part of that in the past. So I think as we continue to go through and advocate, you know, for the CIP, thinking about where that advocacy should continue beyond the forum here within the hearings, I think it's going to be really important for our families and communities to be aware. So I look forward to us continuing to have conversation about that, because we talked about a lot of important things tonight, and all of them are important to all of these schools that we've mentioned this evening. But that does mean, you know, we need to be able to protect the interests that are within the CIP that we presented. So I just look forward to us continuing to work with the community to move forward on those projects. And some of the things that we've talked about in terms of communication, in a more proactive way to talk, to share some proactive things that we have done that aren't particularly in the CIP but have addressed needs within our schools, I look forward to continuing to work with the staff to share that as well, because we've had, we've made some progress in those areas, and if that's something we can be more forthright in sharing so that, you know, the public knows what we've done, then we should and will do that. So I look forward to that as well. So thank you, everyone, tonight for coming out. Thank you to the staff so much for being here, addressing the questions, and taking their notes, as we'll have much follow-up from tonight and the other hearings to come. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for staying to the end. We are adjourned.